We, Lewis Town, Bark County, come to order of the special meeting for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Nelson Riefenack.
Here.
Bobby Hammond. Bobby Hammond.
You're now up, sure?
Yeah, you say here.
Got here, got here.
You're here.
Larry Seer.
Here.
Venus Shade.
Here.
Jim Steele.
Here.
Aaron Wilson.
Here.
Bill Wilson.
Here.
Okay, anybody have anything they want to bring before council?
Thank you, I'm Mark Lucy, I'm the Mifflin County Planning Director, and you actually have an item agenda, so I don't want to steal your thunder and whenever you were to discuss this later on on the agenda, but the reason I felt like it was important for me to come to your meeting today to discuss this is, and to highlight what it is, if you look on the second page of the agenda, it'd be the Mifflin County Parks and Recreation Council vacancy, but I have another project that is close, close parallel to that particular consideration, so I felt it was timely to bring that up since we have a couple things ruling, and I didn't think that if I waited until February, I'd have more time on your agenda, that there would be a lot of chance to take action, so let me elaborate if I may, and I'll go ahead and try and make as brief as I can, but upon your discretion, I can elaborate and answer any questions you have, if that's okay. So, starting off, we have had the Mifflin County Park and Recreation Council in the county for numerous years, and we've always had good participation with that particular council, and this is not an indictment here of Louis Town or any other specific community in the county, but this particular council has really suffered from having the inability to have quorum almost most of our meetings for the past two years, and obviously that same timeline parallels the pandemic, and it's just issues with regards to the changing from meeting in person to meeting electronically via Zoom, but you name the issue, we just haven't been able to meet, so I just thought it would be an opportunity that I've actually been going across the county, and I'm going to go to all the municipalities across the county and present the same opportunity to them, but just reassuring the importance of the Park and Recreation Council, that we really have taken our more recent commitment to hearing what the true community's needs are, we don't want to make any assumptions as to what each individual municipality in the county, what their needs are, so we've put a more focus on open forum for municipalities to discuss what their key issues and projects are, and one of the things that have come up recently is the discussion about the increasing of safety and connection of parks and trail projects that are across the county, certainly you're very well, the Juniata River Trail that's right here in the borough, but many other things very similar to that project has come up, and actually off of the heels of the Louis, excuse me, the Junction Train Station study that we had done through PennDOT, we had found that there's some potential opportunities to make better connections from, for example, the downtown of Louis Town to the Junction Station, and that could potentially be anything from pedestrian to cycling activity, so off of the heels of that project, the consultant had identified some key things to potentially look at, and that started off a conversation that I've had with the Deputy Secretary of PennDOT, Jenny Granger, who, we've actually identified that Mifflin County is one of the few counties across the Commonwealth that does not have what's called an active transportation plan, so if I may, I didn't even count these, but you can just pass these around, essentially the reason I'm handing you a handout today, it's actually the first executive, or the page out of the state's active transportation plan, and it's just to give you a little familiarity with what active transportation is, and why we're considering this topic, and why it relates to Park and Recreation Council. Essentially what Park and Recreation Council familiarity and the mention to active transportation is the cycling and the hiking, walking, essentially non-motorized transportation connections, and certainly since we have, for example, non-motorized trails in this particular community, this is one of the things we're potentially going to discuss, and how that makes better connections with our roadway networks and our bridges and things like that, so we actually do all our transportation planning in Mifflin County through SEDICO, which is what's called the planning organization, and all but two of the counties in the NPO have a bicycle pedestrian plan, which is very similar to an active transportation plan, it's only Mifflin and Juniata County that do not have an active transportation plan, so we're looking at this opportunity to develop this plan, and again, I'm mentioning working with Jenny Granger, she has actually identified some resources through PennDOT's central office to be able to pay for this particular plan out of their particular budget, so there's actually no local dollars going into this project, which is obviously, you know, a great savings for our community, but with that said, the important thing, and anytime we're going to develop a plan, it's important to hear the community residents as to what the needs are in the community identified issues to be able to build a plan off of, so it's a really important opportunity to discuss this with you today, is we'd love you to have an opportunity to potentially consider appointing somebody to a steering committee to develop this plan, and why this is timely, we just found out in the middle of December that the state actually just approved the contract with their consultant to develop this plan on behalf of Mifflin County, so what I'm doing, again, going around the county and trying to recruit members to participate either in a steering committee or by identifying people that we could have key stakeholder interviews with, so you can think anybody that is an active hiker, or a biker, or cyclist, you know, or a walker, somebody just takes maybe a daily or a weekly stroll through the community, these are the kind of people we really want, we really want to hear from, and obviously it dovetails a lot of other transportation funding opportunities, and, you know, the way PennDOT and federal government potentially funds a lot of our projects is they, they try to put projects into key buckets in how they fund things, so by having an active transportation plan, it potentially can bring additional dollars to projects, a project example would be like, if we're going to do a new bridge, we might have an opportunity to have maybe like a sidewalk there, or if we're going to be doing an intersection, maybe you could have a pedestrian signal at that intersection, so that's an example of why I handed, again, handed you the handout, is it gives you a quick summary of what active transportation plan is, but on the reverse side, it actually identifies six of the key issues that the state plan has identified, not necessarily saying that the county's plan will specifically mirror those particular issues, but those are some of the kind of things that we're going to be discussing, so while you consider an opportunity to officially appoint and designate who you would like to the borough to have on the Park and Recreation Council, we'd also like you to consider if there's anybody that would like to serve on behalf of the borough on a potentially a steering committee, or as I mentioned earlier, any key people that would like to have key interviews, stakeholders, or key stakeholder interviews, excuse me, and then what we'll find is that the Park and Recreation Council, since there's obviously a little connection there, will probably be discussing this project at those meetings quite a bit, and there's a possibility we'll actually have those meetings together, so what I've been saying to other communities is that this person could possibly be the same person to serve on the Park and Recreation Council, as well as the Active Transportation Steering Committee, so I'll leave with that, and sorry I went a little bit longer, but I'd be more happy to elaborate on any of that if you would like me to.
Hey, hey, Mark, so you're saying you need two people, one from Mifflin County Parks and Recreation, and one for the active transportation?
Correct. And I apologize that-
The active transportation does not have to be someone from council, it can be any, okay, and do you want those names given to you?
Yes, please.
Can we just email you?
That would work fine.
And you'll connect with them to see if they-
Yes, ma'am. And I did fail to mention this, in case that there be some unfamiliarity by people in the community that don't know what either the Park and Recreation Council does, or what we're going to do with developing that transportation plan, we're going to be actually having a public workshop at six o'clock on Monday, the 25th, so there's another opportunity that if you don't want to necessarily commit today on thinking about who you want to appoint to either of those, there's a good opportunity to send somebody to that particular meeting, and they can potentially learn more about what those two key areas are going to do, so that will be actually in the Annex Building right across the street from the courthouse, again, six o'clock in the meeting room there.
Now, when does the Mifflin County Parks and Recreation meet?
Okay, so that's something we will continue to discuss, because I mentioned we had an issue with having quorum, so we would like to discuss that with whoever the new appointees are going to be across the county, but we had changed last year trying to make better use of people's time to move to bimonthly meetings, so usually we meet every other month, we met in December, we're going to have this workshop, but the time we typically would, which would be the last Tuesday of the month at six o'clock, so that's typically a standing meeting time every other month, so we're anticipating having a meeting the last Tuesday of February, which I don't know what that particular date is, but that's how we typically would have that standing meeting time for him, and then, you know, with that said, that potentially might change going forward, that's initially how we're going to go forward.
Because that was one of the issues before, I know Venus and I talked about it, it was those, the meetings you haven't had in recent years during council meetings, and that's why it was hard for us to attend, so we'll take a look at this.
Tuesdays, yeah.
Yeah, Tuesdays, yeah, well, there've been on some on Wednesdays, or Tuesdays in the past.
Okay.
I'll get, I'll get an answer once they vote, so.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything they want to bring before council now?
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
If not, like to have an approval, accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion to accept, well, I had one question, the facility use request was not on the-
We have not, we talked, we have not, I got my notes here, we have not had any requests for facility use.
Oh, I just wondered, just wondering.
Yeah, so, so if I may, no, Venus, that's good.
No, I didn't see it on the protected documents, that's why I-
Yeah, yeah, so approval of treasurer's report, I know Nelson had asked me about getting something, I've called Pete twice, I've talked to him, I've emailed him, he's trying to get, put something together with Stacy downstairs, but the problem is Stacy's just overwhelmed, and we are working it, we're trying to get something together, we just couldn't get it together for this meeting, schedule of bills, I sent you an email on that, same problem between the ACU fund, payroll, et cetera, so you got, you saw me on that, no facility use requests, everything else is okay.
And I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Motion made, property second, all those in favor, give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Posed? Who cares? Mayor Major.
I got quite a list here, but some of them will be pretty quick, we just discussed, number one, the budget report, we're still trying to get that with our consultant and with Stacy downstairs, but we are working hard on that, one of the things that you'll see, like the first one with the Finance Committee, is we owe $133,000 plus to the Mifflin County Regional Police Department, we're paying about $8,000 a year in interest, so one of the things I'm going to talk to the Finance Committee about this month is maybe making a decision to pay that off with our general fund, so we don't have to keep paying all that interest. Cell phone provider cost comparison, we've been digging in that with our IT rep, and with our number of our cell phones that we have within the borough, this will include replacing them, because they're iPhone 6s, and they're, they're pretty bad, T-Mobile, it will cost us $789 a month, AT&amp;T is $1,050 a month, and Verizon is over $2,000 a month, so we're going to probably talk to the Finance Committee about making a decision at the next meeting to change providers and get new phones and save over $24,000, or save over, well, a lot, $12,000, $14,000 a year. ADA lift has been repaired and inspected, so we're good to go on that, the Bingham and property demolition, we had a meeting this week with our esteemed Eads over here to discuss numerous issues with Penelec, with codes enforcement, with the county, et cetera, we are working forward on getting the RFP put together with Eads, Lucas is working that, one of the initial things of discussion was the power lines along the building, Penelec is wanting us to remove the primary power lines and entrench them under the ground next to the building at a cost of approximately, for the whole project, about $50,000, I have some issues with that, they're saying it's a safety issue with the power lines there, and they need to be moved, or someone has to be paid to stand there and watch them, so nobody hits them, but I got a friend who worked 30 years with Penelec, and he doesn't agree with that, he said, get all the executives, because there's other things you can do, I've got some email out with Lucas and I, trying to get some other answers with some Penelec executives, to find out how we can save that money instead of spending $50,000 that may not need to be spent. The Police Station Community Center RFP, Lucas is still working that, that is still a plan, unless the council comes up with something different, we still plan on moving forward with the community center to be the police station. We know the ASME contract has not been approved, one of their big issues with the union is the cost of the health insurance and the deductible, the $2,000, $4,000, so AFLAC has met with the employees that wanted to meet with them, and Colonial Life is holding meetings here in its council chambers on Tuesdays at three o'clock for any employees who want to come up and talk to them about their gap program to help lessen the cost or help pay for that difference in healthcare, but so far no one has shown up yet, obviously, I told the Colonial Life that's, because we don't have an approved contract yet.
When's that, when's that meeting?
It's at three o'clock on Tuesdays, up here, yeah, they do a webinar, talk to them about it, we got all the information out, it's posted in the work area, it's posted on the bulletin boards.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all out, they, they know it's there, but, you know, that's on them to attend. Task Lane Borough is downstairs, is closed through, through February, we got the guidance on the refuse tag third tier from the last meeting, and I know Ben's been putting some numbers together on that with his team, and we're going to talk about that, the Finance Committee at the end of the month. Fire department funding, one of the things that's come up recently is we have not audited the fire department in, well, we don't know when last time they were audited, I called our auditor, who just did our audit, and they do fire departments, it'll take about a month, and the cost is about $7,500, I recommend that we discuss with the Finance Committee about conducting an audit on the fire department, it's in good faith, because the fire department is very important to the safety of the citizens of town, and we want to make sure that they have enough funding to do what they need to do to support the town and mission.
Quick question.
Yeah.
You say we got audited?
No, we want to audit them.
We want to audit them, to help them out. We did, we got audited, the borough got audited last summer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there anything on that that we could see, or is everything okay, or?
No, everything's okay, it's on my desk, if you want to see it.
Who is the auditor?
Young Oaks and Brown, I think it is, it's-
That's who it is.
Yeah. Young Oaks and Brown, right here. ARPA guidelines, I know I've passed out some emails to you on the guidelines for ARPA, it's actually pretty much the same guidelines we received earlier this summer, we can use the money for fire trucks, police cars, et cetera, which you've already done, the guidelines, I sent you guys, I believe I sent you guys either the link or the briefing, but I have it for if you guys need me to print it for you, so you could look at it, I don't think you're interested in reading the whole 437-page document, so I got a webinar of slides that I can pass out to you if you want them, and that's what we'll talk about at the committee meeting, what the plan is for ARPA for the money we received in 2021, which is about $425,000, and the $425,000 we're going to receive in 2022. The last thing that's on this list is number 12, it's not on here, but it doesn't involve a vote, because right now we're not voting on a name for personnel or money, basically parking meters, we're going to start looking at what we're going to do with the parking meters for 2022, probably in the next Streets meeting in March, I've already talked to the parking authority, and they're on board with the council, probably some changes need to be made, and they're all for, you know, working together and trying to come up a solution for the town for the parking meters, right now, our part-time parking meter person, Scott, is bringing in, when he collects it, it's bringing in about $1,000 a week for, you know, just change inside the, inside the meters. Depending on your questions on these issues, that concludes the 12 I have to brief, Mr. President.
Okay. Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President, okay, for the month of December, the fire department ran 24 alarms, that's two building fires, two cooking fires, grass fire, outside rubbish fire, we ran eight medical assists, two vehicle accidents with injuries, we had two gas leaks, natural gas leaks, two power lines down, police assist, and the coroner's office assist, that consisted of helping entry into a building of a deceased person that was decomposed, the fire department furnished breathing apparatus and brought the person out. We had one smoke in the structure, and three automatic alarms, that's the 24 total for December, I've been following up on the Kish apartments deal, in fact, I was down there yesterday, a lot of the residents are back in, they tell me probably within the next two or three weeks, the rest of them should be back, and they also told me that the community support is great, that the ones that are still in the hotels, they're responding there to take care of them until they're back in their apartments, which should be in another two or three weeks, everybody should be back. Also, Rex Fink asked me yesterday if I would touch on space heaters a little bit, and that is something we need to talk about, we've been running some deals where people's heating houses with space heaters, and you know what happened up in New York City here a couple days ago, that was started by space heater, electric heaters have, always have a chance of shortening out whatever, being knocked over, kerosene heaters, a lot of times we give off carbon monoxide, which dries you in, but heaters are not made to be run 24 hours a day, they're supplemental heat, in fact, I think it is illegal to heat your home with a space heater, I know in the borough, if you don't have a working furnace, the place is condemned, but Rex did want me to touch on the safety of space heaters, because he sees them on his investigations, I see them in fire calls, and we just want to put the word out, especially since we're on television here, for the residents and community to be very careful with them, keep them out of the reach of children, keep them where pets won't be knocked them over, and don't leave one when you're not there, it always seems that-
Don't use extension cords.
Yes, and don't be running all kinds of extension cords across the place, and this one to pass out on, because like Rex said, everybody's safeties are concerned, so we just want to make sure everybody's okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor.
I was going to talk about Kish apartment, but I said it today, you covered it pretty good, I do need to mention the, with the change in the meeting, I also have a famia on this meeting tonight, we've always met on the second ones, the other ones, so you see me slipping out of here, to know where I'm going, okay? That's it.
If anything ever comes up, you got to go to famia, you can't be here and you want to be your chief to discuss an issue for you, just let us know, we'll cover it for you.
I see there's a major issue, thank you.
Please, Chief.
Passed out an annual report for 2021, so just wanted to go over that a little bit, even look at the details, but I'll cover some of the highlights here, calls for service for 2021 were 5,675, that's an increase of 778 over 2020, so we have an increase in the number of calls, probably a thousand, a little over a thousand of those were officer-initiated incidents, where the officer did a traffic stop or initiated the call themselves, the rest of them were calls we received for service. And you can look over the details that I put on here, the criminal arrests, wrote that down a little bit, 131 for the year, 342, traffic citations issued, 199 non-traffic, and 4,574 parking tickets were issued, total revenue for that was $34,115. Purchased new pistols for the department in 2021, started a body camera, body camera system was purchased and implemented, that was all through a grant, so it was over $20,000 in equipment and training was paid by the grant, two new vehicles were purchased, I listed all the vehicles on there, so I know we have some new council members just to give you the status of what our fleet is at this point, the mental health co-responder program, which we talked about, and that will be, the funding for that will be up in September of this year, or October of this year, we are looking for additional funding, grant funding, so we'll continue that program, that's something we might want to discuss in the future about sustaining that beyond the grant, if we run out of grants, but right now there is grant funding for that, so it's something to keep in mind, we might want to start discussing. Training for the year, we had over 1,000 training hours, which averages about 66 hours per officer, the requirement is 12 hours per year per officer, so we definitely exceeded that, and I listed some of the subjects we covered there in training, we had an intern that did parking enforcement, we're continuing to work for accreditation, we started that last year, and hopefully, our goal is to have it completed by the end of this year, it sometimes can take up to three years to complete, but we want to try to have it completed this year. Listened to some of the community service events we did throughout the year, National Night Out, trunk or treat, shop with the cop, and in Phila Cruiser, we collected $67, and three truckloads of food, we're getting to Luna Center and Mother Hubbard's cupboard, our new radios were encrypted, that was all, all last year, negotiated new contract, three year contract, which ends in 2024, collected 320 pounds of unwanted prescription medications through our drug takeback initiative, and we signed a five-year lease for our current station, and Ken mentioned that, the RFP for looking at the community center is an alternate location, so we'll need to be looking at that this year, I listed our current roster there, again, because we have some, some new council members, want to make sure you're up to date on what our current complement is, and we're doing our civil service testing this Sunday to establish a new list, eligibility, hiring list, so we'll be going there. Just some highlights from last year, and what we're looking to do this year, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
The new pistols that were purchased, the old ones, were they traded?
Yeah, they were traded, yeah, we traded, the vendor that we deal with, we traded, so we did get, you know, a discounted price on the new ones.
Any other questions for the chief?
Well done, Chief.
Boroughs and legislature.
Thank you, Mr. President, we need to, council needs to reappoint the civil service commissioners, for those of you that are new, council appoints a civil service commission, and the civil service commission's job is to essentially hire, promote, and test potential police officers, that's, that's what they do in this borough, because you have a paid police department, you as a borough need a civil service commission, and all their terms are up, and I believe that Kim has a resolution there with the names of the commissioners and alternates. So, which is-
Is there only one alternate, Kim?
That's all the name I was giving, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You can appoint up to three alternates, so if you know someone who wants to do it, you could do it now, or it can be done at a later time, too. The civil service commission is a little odd in that you need three people out of three people there for a quorum, so typically you would only need a majority of two, that's why the alternate is really important, because a lot of times, they are actually, you know, doing what needs to be done, if, if somebody else can't make it.
How does this affect the, his next civil service testing is on the 16th of January, does this affect that?
No problem.
Okay, all right, all right. So they could vote on tonight or wait to the next meeting, see if they get more names?
I would honestly recommend just voting on these people now, and then if someone comes forward who would want to be an alternate, then you can appoint them by separate resolution.
These people all want to be appointed?
I got the names from Chief.
Just making sure.
I suppose.
I want to sign, I want to add for something.
No, it was between me, Chief, and Mark, and Brian putting this list together, so everything's, it's to be taken care of, so just vote on it, if you feel.
I make a motion that we pass the civil service commission resolution.
Second.
Motion made, property second, questions? All those in favor, give their consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Posed? Who cares?
Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Okay, before we go into unfinished new business, I'd just like to make a comment that I was very well pleased with the amount of new people we have working for the borough and so on, recently hired and so on, I thought they'd done a real good job on the snow and the ice on the streets, I thought everything was good, I'd just like to express my appreciation. Okay, zoning hearing board vacancy.
Mr. Riefenau? Let me make sure I say it right, Riefenau resigned his position on the zoning hearing board, so we need to appoint somebody at the zoning hearing board vacancy, so I don't have any names, unless you guys have somebody, we can put it out that we need somebody, and maybe vote on it in February.
Everybody know anybody that's interested?
Pretty much can't be someone who's an elected official of the borough- Pretty much can't be someone who's an elected official of the borough or is on any other boards, so.
Okay.
So we know Venus' room, so we can't pick.
Okay, well, if you come up with anybody's interest, why, leave us now.
Okay, we'll keep, we'll keep on having.
Okay, rec board vacancy.
Well, number two, Mifflin County Parks and Recreation was, was, I think that was you, Venus.
It was.
So we need to find somebody else to conflict with her schedule, too. And it's gotta be a council member, as I understand it. On the active transportation one, I have no problem sitting in on that. Me or, me or, you know, Ben can be my second or something, because we, we got Victory Park and Rec Park and all that stuff. But this one here should be a council member from Mifflin County Parks and Recreation. Sounds like it's way up Aaron's alley.
Anybody interested in that?
I can do it, if nobody has any objections to it.
I don't think anybody would object. Okay, here, we have a motion to accept his.
I think you can just appoint him, right?
Yeah, you just appoint him.
You just appoint him? Okay, you're appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll help you with that stuff there. And I'll talk to Mark to see if you could just point me to active transportation on that one. And, and I think Ben can help me on that if I need something. So, okay, Ben?
Yes, sir.
We'll help with Rec Park and all that stuff with that. So we'll work with the county on that.
Okay.
Rec board, this is the one that Casey was on. You have a council member on the rec board itself. So we need another council member on the rec board.
Aaron and I are both on it.
I put, I put Venus and Aaron on it.
That's the rec board?
Yeah, I think this is different, Kim. I think what we're looking at is Casey wasn't allowed to be on it because she was an elected official. So she, but she stayed and represented council on that.
Okay.
So now that she's not here, we, we need to have someone else fill, like, I don't think we ever appointed anybody after her. So there was always one spot open.
So is three members supposed to sit on that?
No, 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 no. The next person has to be someone from the community that's not, that's what I mean. There's an open position on the board itself.
Be a citizen.
That's not a council member.
All right, I'll get with our guys, put her-
I, I, you'd have to talk to Cassandra. I don't know that answer. She may still, she may be interested in me doing that.
She is. But she's a citizen now, so maybe we can just, we could just appoint her.
Yeah, so she, so she should be able to. But I would reach out for her.
Yeah, I'll verify it.
Before we just go appointing her.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, you're gonna contact her.
Yep, I'll contact Cassandra.
Two out of seven can be council members.
Correct.
On the rec board.
And Aaron and I were just, so.
Okay, better work. Number four is to approve the 2018, 2019 CDGB funds in the amount of $14,206.94. And I got that up here if I can find it. Just the normal stuff we approve almost every meeting, it seems like.
Motion made properly second.
Motion made properly second. Questions? All those in favor, give their consent to saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who cares?
All right. Number five, contract engagement letters. There's certain entities that usually do, I don't want to say business with the borough, but they support the borough contracts. So solicitor, borough engineer, auditor, and the wastewater treatment plant engineering firm. So the solicitor, usually you, you appoint or vote, I guess. How does that work with this solicitor, you, for the year? You vote, or what? For, for who you want to be the solicitor?
I mean, they don't, Louistown doesn't typically do it annually. We're just appointed, and, and-
And to, like the manager?
Until, yeah. So we serve at the pleasure of council.
Okay. Where I, the last time, the last two places I've been, they, they voted every year. So that's why.
Yeah, okay, got it. All right. Then you're doing the same thing with the borough of engineers.
They had a, a, a letter of engagement from Eads to request to be our borough engineer. Just gonna let that go, or you want to vote on them, Eads? Auditor, same thing. They came to us and said they would like to remain our auditor.
Who was that?
Young Oaks and Brown, yeah.
That was them, okay.
And then the wastewater treatment plant, we still have Gannett Fleming for the year. We're still gonna do an RFP to find out, or an RFQ to find out if we can find somebody cheaper. But for right now, it's still Gannett Fleming. So we can let those ride, if that's what, what you guys want to do.
I don't go, I don't recall ever changing them or having, I mean, unless somebody-
In the past, we haven't approved them yearly now.
No.
That's okay. Because they, they approached me and said, normally, if they're other towns, they do an engagement letter and get it approved. So I'm okay if you let it ride.
If everybody's satisfied with everything we got right now, we're-
Other than trying to find another, you know, engineering-
Wastewater, yeah. We'll get that taken care of with Lucas.
At a reduced cost.
Okay, we'll let that stuff go. No voting necessary. All good. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Anything get fired, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The night's still young.
That's all.
That's the spirit.
That's the spirit. Any public comments before we go into executive session? No comments? Okay, we're gonna adjourn the meeting in for executive session, five after six.